The second one is to discuss side yard setbacks. And Randy, if you'd like to start with the fireboat.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, good evening. As you know, recently, we became the proud owner of a brand spanking new state-of-the-art fireboat. And one of the things that comes with that is decisions about how to deploy it. Will it deploy it on a trailer from one of the stations? Whether to keep it in the water or near the water? And as we were working to develop what might be the best way to deploy that asset, we got a very pleasant surprise from a group of people that seldom surprise us but always help us, and a group that we could not do without in this city. And that's our volunteer fire department. Mr. Holloway is here. He and members of the volunteers took the lead in developing a concept for the construction of a public safety dock for the fireboat, which would be a specially constructed dock for that purpose, to include a cover and a lift. And I'll just say to you that there's a copy of the basic budget in your package, as well as schematics for the design. And the only thing that may be different in the final is the actual orientation of the boathouse itself. It may, in the end, more closely mirror the existing pier. But with that, Mr. Holloway, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. Well, we got together, volunteer fire company did, with Chief Holloway and discussed several things about, you know, when we got the boat, where we're going to put it. Well, to keep it in the station, it's a great place to keep it, but the real estate, it takes up a lot of real estate in the station, sitting in there with the two trucks, truck hooked to it. And really and truly, it's not our best response. Our best response would be from a pier, a lift on a pier. And we spoke with Robert and volunteer fire company decided last month that we would go ahead and back this project with his help to construct a pier down at Rins Road. If the city council lets us use the property, we'll be more than glad to handle the arrangements. Y'all have got a copy of the drawings. We've had a local contractor. We've gotten with him, and he has drawn us up, put the drawings together, and put our estimates and everything together for us. And we just decided we were going to go with him. If council approves it tonight, we'll get started. He said, from the time he starts construction, it'll take three weeks of good weather, and the pier should be complete. Lift, the cover, electrical, all that should be done in three weeks. Anybody have any questions? We'd be more than glad to answer them, or...
Well, Scott, the only thing I would suggest, since I'm right there beside it, the orientation you show coming straight out from the end of Rins Road indicates that there's 80 feet from the corner of the house or the lift to the edge of the riprap around my house. If you angle that pier to parallel the existing pier, building that same length and same size lift, you'll get 100 feet clearance from the edge of my riprap to the edge of the lift. You'll be in deeper water, and it'll mean that when the fireboat leaves, he won't have to back out into the channel. He can leave and be right in White House Cove. That's a tight turn for two large boats, and it often happens that one will be leaving the covered slips and one will be coming in, and they'll meet just about right there. It's a blind turn for the person, for both of them. And it's, given the wind blowing from the northeast direction, it tends to blow them away from my riprap. And 80 feet's mighty close for two of those large boats to pass, not knowing where the other one is until the last minute. So I would strongly suggest you parallel the existing pier and get that lift over some.
We can do that. We had just had our contractor run it out as, you know, just straight off.
Right.
He hasn't done, you know, he'll go out and do the soundings and stuff and find the deepest water. Because he was, he had mentioned the same thing. He said, we might want to move it closer to the existing pier as to where it's at now. But we had him draw it all up, just like this, and to present to y'all, well, we can move, we can move it over accordingly. And he said, you know, he would have to, he would have to actually get out there and take the soundings and, you know, and find out how deep it is, and put the pier actually in the deepest amount of water.
The actual channel, my point, if you follow the channel, and a lot of boats make that mistake, they think they can come straight in, there's a bar out there just off of the pumpout of the existing dock. And at low tide, many of them run aground, you've got to actually hug my property to make that turn in it, to stay in the channel. So the more room you can give them, the better.
Okay. Good comments, and I'm sure this is a preliminary plan, so as you and the local contractor work out the details, just let us know what the final plan looks like.
Oh, yeah, he was gonna, once we got him on the job, he was going to come up with...
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have you... I'm asking, if the company may just go on and make a little bit of that, do we have to put, what projects, how would we...
In this particular case, the volunteer fire department is the contracting agency, and they're not under the same procurement rules that we are.
That's the answer to your question. The other question is, and the fireboat on the lift back there, will the lift have a manual mechanism to bypass the electrical in case electricity fails, don't have electricity, you have a fire call, and you go to launch the boat, you can't... The only boats I've seen so far are electrical only, it would be a terrible thing to have a pull-up on a lift that you could not pull.
No, this lift will be, the lift will be wired out at the head of the pier. Will be a 220 generator plug. We, one of our members actually mentioned that, to have that in, the proposal was have it wired out at the edge of the pier. There'll be a 220 connection for generators, so we can pull the engine up to it, tug the engine into it, put the boat down. We made provisions for the same thing. We had thought about that, and that's included in our electrical contractors' price.
And the only other question, Andy, is is there any reason why we didn't put the other chair on the existing dock there?
Existing dock?
Yeah. Have a sit here. Does it, didn't it follow the protocol?
Yeah. I think there are a couple of reasons that we didn't think that was the first choice. First, it's very high, and this will, it will make, that particular structure would be very difficult in terms of lifting things in and out. We also have certain use restrictions on that because it was a grant-funded project. But really, it was the height and the feeling that it wasn't advantageous to lift equipment and people up out of the water from there.
And there was a security aspect as well, right? As far as being able to secure the pier and access to the boat?
That's what we were looking at. Security of the pier, only being fire personnel, police department. Whoever needs to be on there will have access to it, but everybody else will be, you know, it won't be a public pier. You know, it will be kept for fire rescue personnel.
You'd be surprised how many kids in the summertime come down to the pier and jump off the end of it to go swimming. A lot of them. So you wouldn't want your fireboat out there where they can get to it.
We would like to have done a little more on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I don't, there's not a, is there a formal vote here tonight, or this is just a wish to, the consensus of council to proceed forward? Is that what this is?
We wanted to bring this to you, to tell you what the plan was, in case the council had any concerns about us moving forward. As I said, the volunteers are paying the, about three-quarters of the expense. The balance of the expense will be paid forth via donation from the fire department's current budget, paid fire department's budget, to the volunteers in an existing line by using appropriations within that budget. And we just wanted to make sure that you didn't have any concerns before we proceeded. As I said to the staff, I'd like to hear about the concerns ahead of time, so that we don't have to talk about them every day for the rest of my tenure here.
Fair enough. I don't hear any concerns whatsoever, but I think it's an excellent move. And the only thing I can possibly add to the discussion is my thanks. Again, the volunteers and the paid staff have worked out yet another great sign of cooperation and looking at the needs of the city to provide what I believe is a real good solution. And I thank y'all all for that. And please pass my thanks along to the volunteers, okay? For the financial contribution as well. Robert, we can, we just take it from him. Go ahead, Robert, go ahead.
Thank you. Go ahead, Robert.
Tom on this also. Tom was a big help in working with contractor and, you know, what we wanted and kind of laying things out how they need to be and all that good stuff. Because usually, in the past, they've came to us and said, we want to do this, and it's already laid out. This is kind of really one of the first projects we've actually got in the middle of and, you know, took part of and kind of took the head on it and moved forward with it, you know, dealing with contractors and all that stuff. And we, incidentally, we are using all Pecoson contractors. They were very receptive of our idea, and they really want this to work. We've worked with several of them before, and they really, they were really interested, so, I mean, it is, all the citizens donate to us, and we're giving it right back, keeping it right in the city and, you know, spending it hopefully how everybody sees, you know, we should. We're giving it right back when we need to, you know. Our picture-taking fundraiser, that's our big fundraiser for the year, and that accumulates the money for us to keep doing this, so...
Well, again, thank you very much. And I think the only thing I heard was whatever the final layout, just informational copy, I think, to council, whatever the final layout is, okay?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Y'all want to stay for the next part? Side yard setbacks?
Tom would like to sit up front for that, if it's easy and possible.
All right, y'all have a good afternoon.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks for coming. You're fine, how you doing?
I came scrambling and on two wheels myself.
All right. Kevin, you about ready to go?
Should be. He wants me to load up the computer here.
I changed the order on you. I apologize, but Scott, anyway, probably had to go back and do, and work, maybe Michael as well, and Robert.
Put something over.
Ready to proceed? Ready to proceed, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
All right. As Kevin's getting us ready, members of council, you will recall, four or five months ago, we had a conversation pertaining to the side setback requirements for non-conforming lots in our three residential districts. Staff was asked to look at that and come back to determine if there should be a process within the zoning ordinance to allow for smaller side setbacks for existing non-conforming lots. If so, what they should be. And Kevin took the lead, working with all the members of, that you see here, Karen, Ken, Debbie, me a little bit, to work through a series of recommendations. Our purpose tonight is to show those to you, talk a little bit about the methodology behind the recommendation, and see if you're generally comfortable with it. If you are generally comfortable with it, then we will begin the process with planning commission, whereas this came as a result of a request from council to take a look at it. We didn't want to go too far down the public hearing, public involvement process until we determined that we were generally meeting your expectation. Kevin, would you walk us through, please?
Absolutely. I'm going to load up the PowerPoint presentation we prepared here.
All right. As he does that, members of council, you'll see in your package is a complete copy of that presentation, so...
You're going to bear with us. It's being quite slow right now.
Karen, pass that down to Kevin. Kevin, as you're waiting for it to load, why don't you begin working off the hard copy of the presentation?
That'll work.
Council members have it as well.
Absolutely. Well, so strange. Karen, all right. As Randy explained, our department was tasked several months ago with finding the solution to a problem in regard to side yard setback requirements throughout the city. Initially, we focused on the RS district, which requires the largest lot area, as well as the largest side yard setback requirement. With the real estate assessor Buddy's help, we were able to determine that a massive amount of lots within these single-family residential districts were actually non-conforming. So we realized we had an issue, especially with, throughout the, five years prior, a lot of BZA requests for variances went before the BZA. So we identified we had a problem, and this is, tonight is our concept on how we solve this issue. Here's the zoning map. It outlines the zoning districts within the city. The yellow area up at the top, it's the Western Precinct, it's the RS district, the largest lots areas required there, 20-foot side yard requirements. The orange area in the middle is the R1 district, pretty much the heart of the city right there. And then the pink down at the bottom is Ridge Road-Messick area, that's R2, the most narrow lots there, the smaller lot widths are required. We looked at whether to do, look at lot width or lot size with this concept, and our goal was to grant relief to property owners of substandard lots in these districts. And we're focusing on single-family residential districts, not multifamily. And we wanted to help them bypass the variance process. Variances, especially since 2009, are incredibly difficult to justify. So more often than not, someone would request a variance, and it had to legally be denied. So we determined that substandard, non-conforming lots eligible for relief shall be defined as lots not meeting the current minimum lot frontage requirements, substandard by substandard lot width. Here are the current lot requirements for single-family residential districts. You can see the zoning district there on the left. Right now, for the RS district, it's 120 feet with a side yard setback required of 20. R1 and R2 have 100-foot lot frontage requirement for the R1 district, 15-foot required side yard setback. R2 district, 90-foot lot width requirement with a 15-foot required setback, side yard In a four-year time span between July 2005 and July 2009, the BZA heard 19 requests for variances related to required side yard setbacks. In fact, one of the BZA criteria focuses on if a variance request is reoccurring enough in nature, it shall require review of the zoning ordinance. And that's what we're doing here. After 2009, new, more stringent BZA requirements were enacted, which make justifying a variance very, very, very difficult. So really, that process would do property owners in the city no good, because they can't legally justify it. This is the table we have put together to offer relief to property owners within these single-family residential districts. And we're focusing on, the key element here is lot width. If they meet these lot width requirements, they're a non-conforming lot, and they're within these thresholds, they would essentially get a five-foot allowance in their side yard. For the RS district, if they are less than what is required, which is 120 feet...
Define non-conforming for me, please.
Non-conforming in this instance, well, in general, you're not meeting the minimum required standards, lot standards, whether that's lot area, lot width, for your zoning district.
Some standard.
Yes, any standard, any standard. For our intents and purposes, non-conforming is you do not meet the minimum lot width requirement, which, for the RS district, is 120 feet, for the R1 district is 100 feet, and for the R2 district is 90 feet. So if you're below those standards, you're eligible for this five-foot reduction. And the RS is a little different. If you're below 120 feet but greater than 100 feet of lot width, we could reduce that from 20 feet to 15 feet. For lots less than 100 feet in the RS district, it would be reduced from 20 feet to 10 feet, because you would be not much larger than any other lot within any other single-family residential zoning district. For R1, if you're less than 100 linear feet, we would reduce that from 15 to 10. And in R2, if you're less than 90 feet, we would reduce that from 15 to 10 as well. Corner lots are a little different. In accordance with our zoning ordinance regulations, corner lots have two front yards and two side yards. They don't have a rear yard. And we're not reducing the front yard requirements for corner lots. We'll let them reduce both side yards. But the lot width requirements are higher. For the RS district, these street frontage requirements for the RS, 125 feet. The required side yard setback right now is 20 feet. R1 required lot width for corner lots, 125 feet, with a required side yard setback of 15. And R2, a required lot width of 115 feet, with a required side yard setback of 15. We have the same sliding scale for corner lots. They would be able to reduce essentially by five feet. RS, if it's less than the minimum required of 125 but greater than 115 feet, it would be reduced from 20 to 15. Lots that are 115 feet or less in width in the RS district, we would reduce that from 20 to 10. R1, if it's less than 125, we would reduce it from 15 to 10. And then R2, if it's less than 115 feet, we would take that from 15 feet to 10 feet for them. In digging into this, that we feel the concept works, because it addresses the issue, your side yards are dictated by your lot width and location of the structure on your lot. But in talking with the building official and the fire chief, there appeared to be a potential safety risk we're taking by allowing structures to be closer than 20 feet. Because we'll get into an issue where potentially, there's a property, a house on a lot that is on the property line. We'll particularly see this in the R2 district on Messick and Ridge Road. So if there is a lot that meets our requirements that we're proposing, and they want to go within 10 feet of their adjacent property, and the house on the lot next to them is already on the property line, they're going to only be 10 feet from that structure. So in talking with Ken, we've determined that for property owners wishing to take advantage of this allowance, we should require them to construct the exterior side portion, just the exterior side closest to their adjacent property, with a two-hour rated firewall, features and materials, to protect both of the, both properties from fire spread. With our limited fire staff, we feel it's in all of our citizens' best interest. Here's an example of the fire-rated system design. Ken could explain that much better than me. We can let him get into that. But in summary, what we're allowing single-family residential lots to do throughout the RS, R2, and R1 districts is to reduce their required side yard setback by five feet on a sliding scale, barring they are a non-conforming lot, by non-conforming a substandard lot width. And property owners taking advantage of this section will be required to construct the side wall closest to their neighbors using a two-hour rated firewall, materials and features only on that exterior portion. I know that was rather quick, but can I answer any questions?
Kevin?
Yes, sir.
What would be the problem if for consistency's sake, we just made all of these 10 feet?
For consistency's sake, that would be the easiest solution. However, you get into the issue of the RS district, where the lot for square footage requirements are quite large, houses are farther apart. I think we don't do the district justice if we let those lots, say, that are over 100 feet in lot width, to go down to 10 feet. They still have enough area to make that additional five feet work.
Well, you know, backing up what Buddy said, if somebody wanted to build a carport or garage addition or something like that, that's not a major structure that would still allow them to get within 10 feet of the property on. We had an issue, something similar to that, not too long ago, where we couldn't do anything about it. I don't remember the details, but what the person wanted to do seemed reasonable, and they did it very well, but there was no way to allow it to happen. And I don't know that I would disagree that this would cost more than 10. Another thing is, I don't know what happened in 2009 that took the BZA's ability away to make a reasonable change. Would it be as simple as undoing what we did in 2009?
Let me speak to that?
Yeah, please.
And Wayne will, I'm sure, correct me if I get it wrong, but there was a Virginia Supreme Court ruling which effectively changed the standard that BZAs can, must adhere to in determining that there is a need for a variance. And the definition of hardship was much more solidified. They would have to show that they had a compelling hardship way beyond the need to simply build a larger carport, that the property, the use of the property was completely, made completely unusable by an unreasonable side yard setback. The bar just got considerably higher. I'm not maybe explaining as well. Wayne may want to try me out.
Basically, the Supreme Court said is you have to, before you can grant the variance, you basically have to show that there is no other utilization of the property. You've in effect taken the property by an administrative rule. That's not what the prior standard had been for BZA, but the concrete case in 2009 made that ruling. So it severely limited the legal ability for a BZA to take an exception, to allow somebody to deviate three or four feet on these lots.
Okay, but if the city ordinance has allowed it to be within 10 feet, then they can...
You can't do it with the Supreme Court. You can pass a city ordinance that allows zoning, yes, but the BZA is granting an exception. It's not, it's saying that you can't comply with the city ordinance. So when the BZA grants that exception, they have a standard they have to meet, and that standard has been severely restricted so that... standard has been severely restricted so that now it's almost impossible to get a valid variance.
One more question, is, did the Supreme Court set 15 feet?
Supreme Court didn't set feet, it set the standard that the BZA reviews by.
Okay, but so we...
This will take it out of the BZA's purpos. If you make these changes, it would not go to the BZA for a variance. It would be already permitted, it'd be a permitted use, not a variance, but an unpermitted use.
If I could echo, if I understood the question, if the council decided that instead of a 15-foot side setback, as this is talking about, you wanted to go to 10, there's nothing that would legally prohibit that. We're suggesting this because we think it's the proper spacing between, between homes. But if you think that it should be less in terms of setback, I think that's why we're here.
Absolutely.
And if you're not sure, you might want to remand it to the Planning Commission and ask them to study whether or not a further reduction from 15 to 10 is warranted. You could do it either way, if you wish to.
My feeling is, you know, we're only talking a matter of about five feet in the instance of a not a corner lot, it's less than 120 but greater than 100, it's got to be a 15-foot offset.
Yes, sir.
Then you go to a corner lot, and it's less than 125 but greater than 115. I don't, to me, it would be a heck of a lot simpler if you just made it all 10 feet. Then you don't get in an argument about somebody's got to go get a survey and prove that their front lot is only 115. You know, if a guy's lot is 115 feet, he's got to offset by 15 feet. But yet, if he lives on a corner and it's 115 feet, he's still got to do a 15-foot offset.
I think, I think these are all really good comments, and I think that the task that we have tonight is, do we believe that an ordinance change should be considered by the Planning Commission? And I think Buddy, your comment is something that we can certainly pass down there and say, because I can see what you're, what you're saying, and I can also see that the average citizen will say, well, they can do it, why can't I? You know, and it would, it would do away with a lot of that. I think you can get around that in two or three different ways. You can say for lots platted after a certain point, where you know you have the conformance. I've seen language like that, that allows, you know, hey, these lots in this area are really good, and these were plotted after this, and we see no reason to go to 10 feet. You know, if you have, if you have neighborhoods like that, and I'm sure you have some in mind. You know, and certain neighborhoods may want to be, fit into that bill, like a Heritage Cove, they don't, they don't want somebody encroaching on the line to protect the value of their home, or whatever. But I, I see your base point. I think there's a lot of work to be done between now and when it comes back to council. But what I'm hearing is that with the exception that the state, the Supreme Court has taken and the leeway that they've taken away from the BZA, which is one of the reasons that we're talking about this, and the number of zoning changes that have been requested, and y'all are probably more of an expert on how many side yard setback variances have there been in 20 years, but I would say it'd be a substantial number, and I can raise my hand and say I was one of them, that the, the need is there. And I think that's really what council's saying, is that we've got some need to change the ordinance and send it, remand it to the Planning Commission, and we think you got it right with the suggestion of what Buddy had talked about, consider doing that in a couple of different ways. One is standard 10-yard setback, I mean, 10, 10 feet setback. And the other would be to do it by lot plotting date, like I've seen it done in the past. Is that fair enough?
My only comment was going to be, but you summed it up mighty nicely, is there is a quality of life issue, the crowd folks up, but you summarized that well.
So, I just think we...
Homeowners associations can deal with that also, right?
Not about building.
This, this has got nothing to do with restrictive covenants on any land. You can't, you can't change. If the person buys a piece of property and that restrictive covenant says you've got to have a 50-foot side yard setback, it doesn't matter what the city says, 50-foot is enforceable by every lot owner in that subdivision.
Fair enough.
Well, that was, that was, that was, that was my question, Wayne. Even if the city says we set it for 10, if, if you have an area that wants it to be 15 or 20, they can do that through a homeowners association.
But you can't go less.
Remember, we're only dealing, we're only dealing here with non-conforming lots, which means these are going to be lots that were platted after we had the last zoning change, and, you know, with the day, I forgot the date, but I don't remember what it was, but these non-conforming lots were lots that were platted under another law that allowed a different size. And then when we changed to require larger lot sizes, you now have two kinds of lots. You have lots that are under the new ordinance, that are the 125-foot lots in the RS zone, that before it was made an RS zone, were only requiring 100-foot lot, for example. So we're dealing with those lots that don't meet the current standards and are not able to get a variance from the BZA.
So this would not have any effect on an existing lot that was formed under a previous code?
That's right.
Absolutely.
If there's a, if there's a subdivision restrictive covenants, those stay in the force. We're not changing any, we can't change any of those. That can only be done by the lot owners themselves.
What about if there's a rebuild issue? I'm thinking my property, I have a garage that's, was built in the 40s and it is touching the property line. Just suppose it burnt down or something and I had to rebuild it, would I, am I allowed to rebuild in the same location, or would I then have to move everything? Are there rules about this?
Our, our non-conforming zoning ordinance section, if it were to burn down in a fire like that, you would have to meet the, the new standards, so...
You better protect it.
Two years, right, to rebuild?
Yeah, you have two years to rebuild. Well, it, it depends. If, if your house were to partially burn down and you were to replace under 50% of it, you'd be able to, to be rebuilt in its same footprint. 50% of replacement values are threshold.
But that does not apply to accessory buildings, that's just for primary structures.
That's just for primary structures. So, if it's an attached garage.
The one question I would have, how do we feel about the firewall requirement?
I think it's a necessary evil.
What's the difference between the firewall and the standard building codes?
What you would be doing would be taking a standard wall and you're adding an additional layer of material to the outside to give it a two-hour rating. And the reason for that would be that you're going to try to protect the adjacent parcel from, from having the fire come out of that unit, or from damage, if you have vinyl siding on the outside, the vinyl siding is going to be gone. But it's going to give you another, it's going to give you another hour's rating to try to protect that adjacent property, so you don't have any structural damage to that house.
So if you, if you were going to build a house and had, were going to put vinyl siding on it, if you put, had a firewall, rated as a firewall, what difference would, would you do to the wall?
You'd just be adding one additional layer of, of a fireproof type material. It could be something as simple as, the example that's in your packet shows a listed firewall assembly. On the outside, it has a, would be a standard piece of OSB plywood type sheeting, and then you would add another layer of a material on that, it could be 5/8 sheet rock, which I wouldn't recommend due to mold issues, or they do make the material called a durrock, which you could use. And they also have some other material that is, it's a half-inch thick, it's, it's a fire-rated material, it's water-resistant, mold-resistant. It averages about, you can buy it for, it's about 70 cents a square foot for material with labor. It could be about a dollar and a half a square foot additional cost. But the, the advantage you have is that you are adding another hour's rating to that structure. You're making it, just like you would have if you were in a townhouse, the minimum requirements. So the feeling was that the homeowner wants to take advantage of this, we don't want to put them or potentially the adjacent parcel in, in under harm's way. We want to try to offset that a little bit. So just on that exterior wall, you add the additional layer, you're adding some safety, you also could get a greater reduction in your homeowner's insurance by doing that.
The concern is when we shrink the setback on both sides, the houses are closer together. And in some cases, there may be a house on the other property line which is closer, you know, maybe it pre-existed our whole zoning ordinance. So it could be a zero lot line house. You're talking about houses that are now 15 feet apart, potentially. And so the idea was, if we're going to allow them to get that much closer, that we ought to increase the fire standard. So I guess what Debbie's asking is, are we comfortable with at least advancing that notion through the Planning Commission? I believe it to be a reasonable trade-off for, but my opinion doesn't matter in the end.
Any hard spots on that, because I see it.
I think if you're going to be that close, you should have a firewall.
Okay. That answer your question? I think we're, I'm seeing a lot of heads doing this.
Okay. Then we will send this to the Planning Commission, and you should see it back in about 90 days.
With comments.
With comments.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I guess that concludes the work session, and be on a regular session at 7 o'clock. Thanks.